Call the order. Wow, that works good, Andy, you got it. This is the City of Dunellen Special City Council Workshop, October 6, 2021. It is now 3:40 PM. Would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Louisiana's stand, one nation, under God, universal, for liberty and justice for all. While we're standing, is there anyone in the audience that would like to say either prayer or any words of wisdom or any words of guidance? All right, at this time, why don't we just drop our heads? This council probably has about five hours, maybe six hours of meetings sitting in front of us today. So let's just hope we have the strength to buckle your knees, to hang in there, stay alert, hang tough, get it done to the end. All right, everybody, please have a seat. Okay, Ms. Odom, roll call.
Mayor White.
Present.
Vice Mayor Henshaw.
I am here.
Councilwoman Williams.
Here.
Councilwoman Kenny.
Here.
Councilwoman Covage.
Present.
Dan Smith, Finance Officer.
Here.
Chief McQuaid.
Here.
Troy Sider, Public Works.
Here.
Michelle Leonard, Park's Department.
Here.
Lieutenant Yarx.
No, here we go.
Okay. Georgina Sid, Community Developer Manager.
Here.
City Attorney Andrew Hand.
I'm here.
The agenda for this meeting was posted on the city's website and City Hall Bulletin Board on Wednesday, September 29, 2021.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Odom. The purpose of this special meeting is our continued journey to create ordinances that control and regulate Blue Run Park. I believe this is now the third special meeting that we have called for this, which means council is looking at this as something very important and dedicating a lot of time to get this done. Hopefully, by having this many meetings and discussion, everybody who has wanted to participate, everybody who has wanted to give their input, their opinions, their suggestions, has been allowed to do so. I know there's been people that have been allowed to speak numerous times on this. I've received many, many emails and correspondence, phone calls. I've invited people over to my home that would want to give me their opinion. So I really don't know what more council could possibly do to allow its open door to give everybody a chance to participate, including continuous invitations and notices to the county to come in and to participate and to give us their ideas. So what I am really hopeful of is that today's workshop will be the final real push on trying to get these ordinances shaped up the way we want them to be shaped up. From that point, we would move it to a council meeting. From that point, the council then would forward the finished product, at least at that point, what we think the finished product is, to the Planning Commission. Planning Commission then would go over it and come back to council with their recommendations. And then council, again, publicly would have to have two more public meetings to discuss this. So there's still ample time for modifications and changes. There's still time, and there'll be also extra time to give more input. And it's an exhaustive procedure. In the three years that I have been on council, I can't recollect in my time council spending as much time on a subject matter in order to get it worked out. So, Ms. Odom, do we have the ordinances as they are currently proposed handy so we can just have them up there for the audience to look at and can blow it up the best you can? Just going to read the opening part of it to give everybody an idea what this is all about. Ordinance 2020-XX. An ordinance of the City of Dunellen, Florida, amending Chapter 46 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Dunellen. Amending Article 1 of Chapter 46, creating Article 3, Blue Run Park, establishing rules and regulations for Blue Run Park via ordinance, establishing fines for violations, establishing the appeal process, providing for conflicts, providing for visibility, providing for codification, and providing for an effective date. That is what we're trying to do. To council's credit, the park was put together and formulated and finalized in the 2007-2008 period, which is approximately 13 years ago. Part of the requirements of that agreement was to put ordinance together, and that has not been done. So this council has challenged itself to step up and to do something that has needed to be done for a while. And the way we're going about it, I'm very happy with, where we're being totally thorough, totally transparent, and allowing everybody and anybody to have their say. So with that said, I am not going to go over too many of the particulars, except maybe some that we still have rough edges about. If you look at the first page, where you see where it's the whereas, the whereas, whereas, I've been informed by council that these are called recitals. I didn't know that was the legal term. And these recitals, basically, if you go through them, it clarifies that the city does own Blue Run Park, and the main responsibility of managing it is on the city. We also share some responsibilities with the county, Marion County, and the Office of Greenways and Trails. It also describes what the park was originally intended to be. It was intended to be a natural passive park where people could have an interpretive experience by enjoying the park. And it's incumbent upon the city, the county, and those that are connected with our agreements to guarantee that this park for future generations. In the management plan, it discusses capital improvements. It also talks about access, safety, and maintenance. Talks about the agreement we have with the county as it relates to KP Hole, and KP Hole using E-Park as its takeout. Stresses conservation. It also defines commercial use. And one of the things in the agreement is there is not to be private commercial use in the park unless there is an agreement between the city and FCT. Without that agreement, there is not to be commercial use within the park. That is part of the original agreements that put this together. One last thing that was incumbent. Basically, there are other things, I'm just generalizing, that the ordinance that we come up with, the finished product, should be consistent with the management plan and consistent with the agreements that were originally put in place in 2007, 2008. We have tried very diligently to make these ordinances where they mirror as close as possible to those original agreements. Even though 13 years has passed, and the use of this park may be somewhat different than what was originally conceptualized, we have done our best to create these ordinances that mirror those agreements. So before we leave the recitals and get to the particulars of the ordinance, there's one portion of the recitals that has been discussed. I've discussed it with the attorney, I've discussed it with Mandy. Mandy, if you look on the recitals, line number 72, it says, "Whereas the city recognizes that pre-arranged taxicabs and individual rideshare trips provide non-disruptive alternative to individuals driving a single personal vehicle to and from the park and are unrelated to park operations." There's a little bit of concern right there on how that could be interpreted. Right now, those that have been monitoring the park are aware that there are private individuals who are bringing in people into the park for fees, whether it be a pickup truck, vans, or whatever. There's some concern there that this language could somehow allow that to... It's a good idea, someone wants to come in a taxicab or whatever. The idea that that could be used in a way that it could create actually many commercial operations bringing in a small number of people. So, looking at council, just looking at the recitals, that was the only recital that I saw that I had any issues with. Ms. Kenny, do you have anything in the... Let's start off with the recitals. Do you have anything in the recitals that you would like to make comment to?
Yes, I do. I'd like to add a little bit that you've already said. With the recital that you just pointed out on page 3, I think we all received, all the council received a letter from the individual that was most concerned. And I definitely believe that the concern is a legitimate concern in terms of not wanting to do anything that would put us crossways with our initial agreement with FCT. So I agree with that. Then in addition to that, on page 6, there is... Let's see, it would start with 220, 220.
Ms. Kenny, please.
Okay.
Let's do the recitals first, and then we'll go through.
Well, then I would just say that I concur with the concern about the first recital.
Okay, very good. Ms. Williams?
It's interesting to see.
I was saying we did...
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm not... It's just interesting to see how we're going to control this.
Okay.
You will pass an ordinance. There's always going to be somebody to break it, so.
See that guy in the uniform back there? It's going to be all on him.
You're going to be hiring some more police officers?
Ms. Covage?
I'd like to read from a letter that was sent to me from Dwight Porter.
Pull your microphone down.
Sorry, I'd like to read from a letter that was sent to me from Dwight Porter. He has concerns that allowing limited number of commercial vendors to use the city park is going to create aggravation for people who want to start legitimate businesses that have nothing to do with using city government property. Okay, and he says, "No reasonable businessman is going to make investment in any high-end commercial real estate or start a business here if they have to compete with a business that's going to use community property for a small or nominal fee." So that's something we haven't even thought about before. Other than that, I personally believe that if we control that city park called Blue Run as far as how many people are using it as a takeout place for a commercial park business, mean kayaking or tubing, that then we are going to have to literally answer to anybody else who wants to become a vendor to use it for a kayaking or a tubing business. And literally, people could start legally little roadside stands, like the people who sell peanuts out there on the streets or sell their produce or whatever. Because as of now, nobody is going to... I'll put it this way, they're not going to let one vendor use that park for their business without saying, "Me too." So that's a major concern also.
So are you concurring that you have an issue with the verdict?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Vice Mayor?
Yeah, kind of bring it back. So what would be the recommendation from this council if we're not allowing an Uber or a taxicab? I mean, how are we going to stop the public from hiring these vendors to come to our... That come to our city that are vacationing here or whatever? What's the other suggestion? And how is it that we're going to be able to tell that it's not Valerie dropping off the four teenagers and running off, you know, whatever? I mean, I just don't know for... And for walking, I mean, for the walking trails. I mean, because we're only focusing on the park for the swimming area, but I mean, we're also now saying that somebody who wants to bring their... How are we going to be able to identify that it's a pickup truck dropping off the kids to go for a walk in the park? I just don't know how we're going to be able to tell people they can't Uber or Lyft or taxicab or have Grandma and Grandpa drop them off. And again, we just don't need to just focus on the river part of it as well, but the walking park and the trails, and especially now that we're getting ready to get the... Yes, pedestrian bridge, thank you. You know, tunnel, that was the word I was going for. So again, you know, I just don't want to... And it's like Councilwoman Williams said, how are we going to control this? How is the chief going to handle that? So I don't want us to make it something that we can't put into place because, you know, government tends to do this and we make an order, but we don't have any way to enforce it.
True, totally.
I'd like to reply.
Totally, that's fine. Totally get it, and I've milled through that with my mind. We're trying to prevent the unauthorized commercial use, even at a small scale, two at a time, four at a time. But how do we do that? And now when someone just wants to be dropped off at the park? You have that issue. I get that. The answer, well, it would be like, I guess, if you were going to see a New York Yankee game...
Hey, I wouldn't go see the Yankees.
Your taxi driver, or your Uber or whatever you're using would take you to the stadium and drop you off on the sidewalk. They wouldn't actually take you into the field. So you would...
Well, but that's not a good analogy because they're going to drop me off at the drop-off park, part of the baseball field. And that's what they're doing at the river. Or at the park, they're dropping me off. I mean, they're not going to drop me off at the roadside. They're going to drop me off inside the parking area.
Correct.
And so, so that's where... Again, I think we're trying to become so controlling that it's almost, you know, it's just over control. And there's no way to control it, it's my issue.
Ms. Williams, did you want to speak?
I was just thinking, you know, there's always... I don't care what you do, there's always going to be an abuse of services. There's always going to be an abuse. And I mean, it's too late to even think about it. The park is there. But now I begin to wonder in my mind, why do we put a park on a two-lane highway and we don't even have a turnoff? It backs up the... It's too late for that, but it just doesn't make sense to me. I was thinking about that. So I don't know how you can control it. It's interesting.
Okay.
But there needs to be something.
Ms. Covage, did you say you want to speak?
Yeah, I think we can do what other communities have done. You post a really big sign out there that says, "This park is for commercial, is not for commercial use. For reservations, call, we can put City Hall's number. For example, church groups, they come here all the time and they tube or kayak or whatever, and they very often have their own trailers, their own kayaks, or the run of the day. In fact, Southwest Florida Water Management District has a plan for nonprofit groups where they literally borrow the trailer full of kayaks." So posting a sign that would say, "For reservations at this site for use, call City Hall or email or whatever," and then we could have City Hall personnel go ahead and handle reservations. It's complicated. It's not that complicated. Other places... I'll give you a perfect example. I was looking today at a county park in Hernando County, and to use that park for the day, if it's a group, okay, which is mentioned in our ordinances, I believe here that groups must make reservations, they have a place on site on that website that you must call for reservation to use the facility. And there's no charge. They just want to know who is there and when they're coming. And that way, they control the traffic.
Good luck having staff do that. Somebody on the same job function.
Mr. Hand, I think you understand what we're attempting to do. What we're attempting to do is to disallow what's currently there. We have evidence, we have photos, that there are operations with pickup trucks that are on the internet advertising. Give us a call, we'll pick you up. We'll take you to KP Hole, and we'll pick you up at Blue Run Park. It's clearly a commercial enterprise right there. They'll pick up one person, two, or up to six. I don't know what the limit is. It's already going on. So what we're trying to do is to stop that. But somehow, as Vice Mayor has brought up, how do you stop that without preventing someone from, you know, having a taxi or them claiming that they're an Uber operation and they're just dropping and picking people up? So do you have any suggestions how we can accomplish what we're trying to accomplish?
Yes, I think ultimately, and of course, I don't know how everything pans out in the future, what users will do, but I think the situation and the choices for council are pretty cut and dry and pretty clear. And I think I can shuttle a bit of light on and make them a little bit clearer as to what this would do. And when you look at, I know we're talking about the whereas clauses, but if you look at page 6, you see it's highlighted, it's for discussion. I think the first thing for council to consider is whether or not they want taxicabs and rideshare to be able to enter the park. And the fact of the matter is, is that these other businesses, and I saw the website that was brought up, it's not a taxicab service. Taxicabs are services that, you know, have to... They're either charged by mile and charged in a way that driving individuals to different locations. And that could be fleshed out if there's, you know, a concern via a definition. But the first question is just simply, should they even be there at all? If council determines that, no, we don't want taxicabs and we don't want Uber and Lyft, you know, ridesharing services within the park boundaries, then I'm sure that especially the rideshare, which is very popular today, it's just a guess, would probably continue. They would just drop off in proximity of the park, somewhere, somewhere close, and then people would make their way on over. That might work out fine. If council wants to have them on site, well, we have a blanket prohibition on commercial activity within the park already. That is clear, cut, and dry in the ordinance. No commercial activity. In order for any service to be allowed, there needs to be a specific exemption which has to be authorized via an agreement with FCT. So the way that that language on page 6 is couched currently, it's anticipating that we would... The city, when I say we, would enter into an agreement with FCT to allow these particular services. And like, as I said, if there's an issue with taxicabs, that would just be further defined. But there is no problem at all with simply stating that, you know, it's a commercial activity and it's prohibited. And then people would still use the services. It would just be off-site. And, you know, if that were the case and there were issues, then council could amend the ordinance in the future. Likewise, if there is an issue, if council chooses to allow them, council can amend the ordinance in the future to disallow them. It's ultimately a policy choice for council to make.
Yes, Vice Mayor.
I'm just trying to think outside the box of it. What would happen if we had the taxi or the Uber or the Lyft, but they could only drop people off at the parking lot over there on San Jose? Thank you, San Jose.
That's a walking business.
And then they can still... I mean, it's because you're right. They're going to find a way to drop people off at the park. But it would be safer for them to be dropped off in a parking area off the highway where they're not walking with their kids trying to get to there. It's just a suggestion. Trying to figure out how we can make it safe and secure and yet not overburden the small area that we have right at the bridge.
So the two places that could be possible drop-offs would be Palmetto Way, which is just on the other side of the river, or San Jose, which is on the edge of the park. So those are potential.
And there's already a walking path there.
Right.
And I know everybody's been very worried that we don't have a pedestrian bridge yet for the pedestrians going over Palmetto. That would be why I would not recommend... That's why I'm trying to think of another place at the park where people could easily, and they're not going on the main road, Pennsylvania Avenue.
That's a good idea, right where our welcome sign is, right there on San Jose. That'd be a perfect place for a drop-off.
Well, they can go into the park here because there's a path from the park, from that parking spot, to...
And it would eliminate the possibility of having these many commercial businesses that are... Point is, this isn't hypothetical, that maybe, maybe some... It's going on right now.
Yes, sir, now I understand.
So we got it. All right.
Can I add to that? Could I add to that?
Yes.
Yeah, I think, I'm not concerned about people being dropped off by Uber or taxi or whatever. I think our concern is about the kayak shuttle businesses that we see. Okay, and you have to have a business license in Marion County to operate any business, okay? So there is a way, if we put up that sign that says, if you are in, if you can put, kayak shuttle businesses are not allowed to use this site. Okay, it's not about individuals being dropped by rideshare and Uber. I mean, that's... What we're concerned about is a bus or a big van, 12-passenger van coming in, pulling a trailer with nine kayaks on it. Okay, and it's legal now to do that. It is perfectly legal for 10 of those to drive in on a... After they've dropped people off at KP Hole, to drive into that park and pick them up. It's perfectly legal right now because there's no sign there that says they can't do them.
Are they going to be obedient to the sign?
I'm sorry.
Do you think, you really think they're going to follow instructions?
Well, you want to know something? Yes, if we have somebody out there to enforce it, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so.
So, this is what I'm going to say.
We have Marion County park, I'd like to Mr. Coolard perhaps to address that. How do you park those, uh, take care of those issues at other parks here in Marion County?
Dan? Dan? It's the chair, I do those sort of things. Mr. Coolard, since you, since you have been, since you have been welcomed.
I believe I was late, we got caught up in another meeting. So could you, could you re-ask your question for me?
Yes. There are other parks in Marion County, okay, obviously. And how do you handle, for example, someone who wants to come in and sell tacos? They're a vendor. Can they just drive into the park and start selling tacos? So how, who, who takes care of enforcement then?
For that, for that example, we have a mobile food vendor permit. Pretty much, so they, they fill that permit out through either our department or through our procurement department. If it's for the Parks Department, such as Kona Ice, they want to come and sell snow cones at one of our facilities, there's a business agreement between them and our department.
Right, I understand that, but what if someone's there and they don't, haven't done the paperwork? Who's going to take care of that?
So our department manages over 56 parks. And we have a series of park rangers who have that authority. They're badged, um, badged employees, they have a set of responsibilities. So they do patrol and they are able to tell people to leave. They're able to trespass people with the help of the Marion County Sheriff's Office. So we have that authority.
That's what I was expecting in the way of your answer. So how can we transport those services to the Blue Run Park on a Saturday and a Sunday?
We already do provide staff at that park and we actually have a contractual agreement with the Chief of Police to provide security details at that facility.
So if they saw people being picked up by someone with a big van and a trailer behind it, they would have the right to question why they are there?
If there was rules in place.
If there was a rule in effect. That's, I think, reasonable. Thank you.
Before we get started, I want everybody to know, we have Jim Coolard here, Director of Parks, Recreation, Marion County. Welcome, Jim. And Commissioner Bryant, good to see you again. Thank you for coming. I think, I think the question would be, what we're dealing with is, right now, as you heard some of the discussions, we have people with pickup trucks creating businesses where they're actually picking clients up, taking them to KP Hole and coming into Blue Run Park and picking them up. We have photographs, we have evidence that that is ongoing. So what are concerned, what we're wanting to do is to shut that down with this ordinance. But at the same time, we realize that there may be a need for taxi, or Uber, or whatever, to drop people for whatever reason, maybe once in a blue, blue moon. And the fear is that possibly these wildcatters, for lack of a better term, could get their Uber license or whatever and just say they're dropping clients off. So in your situation with the county, if you were aware that someone was dropping people off on a daily basis at a county park, going into the inside of the county park and dropping people off for a fee and coming back and picking people up within the bowels of your park and picking people up for a fee.
I see what you're saying. So I, I think it depends, so in the county, we have, in our code of ordinances, that commercial activity in county parks is against the law. Okay? So if we, if we see that happening, we'll enforce that. But it all, it also depends on being able to prove that that's happening. And so, a, a good example is, for us, um, coaches or parents providing tutorial lessons to children for a fee, you know, pitching lessons or heading lessons for $50 or $60 an hour. We see that all the time. We have a commercial park pass that allows that to happen and they have to display that park pass. So if we see people doing that and they don't display that park pass, we'll ask them to leave, we'll tell them about the process, we'll educate them. We're not going to automatically have them arrested for trespasses. We believe firmly in educating people first, to make sure that they understand the rules. And then once they, we see them back, we ask for the proof and if we don't, do it again. About a third time, then we'll start, we'll talk about trespassing. That's usually all it takes, is a couple of minutes of education.
Okay, thank you. Guarantee you, you'll come up here a few more times before it's over. I kind of think we kind of hit on it, that there is a place where taxis or Uber drop, drop people off safely at the edge of the park where they could have an easy walk into the park. I think Vice Mayor came up with a solution. I would be inclined to eliminate lines 72, 73, 74 and absolutely stop the possibility of wildcat operations coming in, claiming that they're Uber or whatever. And any taxi or any Uber person that would like to bring a client to the park, they can drop them off outside the park, right where the Ben Allen sign is. And people have an easy walk, safe walk into the park. Ms. Kenny, do you, looking for a consensus on this?
Well, I was going to ask you, you're saying line 70, 71, and 72?
72, 73, 74.
Okay, that makes more sense to me, okay.
Just eliminate it.
I would be, I would approve of that, definitely.
Ms. Williams? Ms. Covich? Vice Mayor?
I guess, I mean, I would have just added, they could only drop them off at parking lot.
San Jose.
On San Jose. That way.
Okay. And I'm, I concur. So it seems like you have a pretty strong unanimity that we would like that removed.
Okay. And I will, I will do that, not to get ahead of ourselves, but seeing that that goes hand in hand with lines 214 to 218, I strike that as well. That is just the, uh, the lines that are referencing taxicabs and prearranged rides and FWC agreement permit.
Yeah, I think that's just a reinforcing reference to what's, uh, what we're talking about. So if we're going to eliminate one, it would seem like eliminating that one.
I mean, the numbers.
They'd go hand in hand.
214 to 218.
All right, that was, uh, that was according to going back and forth through council, that seemed to be the only issue in the recitals that we had. So right now, unless something else comes up, I think council's work on the recitals has been pretty much completed before it goes to its next step. All right, let's just go through the, we don't have, we've done a good job. We don't have that many things that aren't agreed to. We have a little bit of something going on with the Article One in general, the authority of the Chief of Police. Chief of Police has the authorities already under emergency safety issues to do whatever the Chief of Police needs to do to keep the safe, keep the city safe, including closing any park or part of the park that he deems as a safety issue. So those powers are basically already within the hands of the chief. But in Article One, it does spell out that at any time when a condition exists that presents a hazard or danger to a city park, park property, or the public's health, safety, or welfare to Chief of Police or unauthorized representatives shall have the authority to. Please keep in mind that this is not totally, the way I understand it, council, counselor, if I'm incorrect, please correct me, this would cover all the city parks. Is that correct?
That's correct. This is modeled after, I believe it's Hernando County's ordinance that Councilwoman Covich referenced several meetings ago. This is a standard clause, typically applies to park rangers, but in this case, it's just reiterating that the Chief of Police has these powers and supplies to all parks. Further on down in the ordinance, when we get there, there is a line that provides some additional commentary on Blue Run Park specifically, but this is for any park in the city, just as you stated, Mary.
I think that's a very important distinction to make out, that this, this actually covers all of our parks and it's not just singling out Blue Run Park. All right, let's flip over to page four. Suspend any and all activities with the park or at 112. If you go back to 110, close any section or area within the park to the public. I think that's very important, just because one part of the park may have a safety issue. If feasible, um, the chief could close that section of the park that is dangerous and allow activities to continue in non-dangerous areas. So I'm sure he kind of has those authorities anyway, to use his discretion, as I would think all police chiefs of cities have.
Mr. Mayor, is this?
Yes.
Is this what we all, did we work all this out with the county?
We're getting there. I think, I think the county's good on this. We're going to get to where I think we have a little bit of an issue. Okay. Go to 129 and I think we're getting into where, where the county has concerns. Generally, the county's concern is, we do have agreements with the county. And we have a perpetual agreement that they have the use and the easement of the tuber takeout. Their concern naturally, totally understood, if at any time the park is closed, it would impact their ability to function at a KP Hole. And there's, there's issues with doing that. You know, you have notification issues. You would have to make a pretty good case that there's a, uh, reasonable and understood reason why to, to do so. So the county does have a very vested interest in the park and in the tuber takeout. And is looking for language that I think allows us to implement the safety issue, but at the same time, recognize that they have a interest in it. And any closure of the park that would impact their ability to continue with the agreement would be something that would really need to be considered. So let's go with 129 and see where this takes us. Okay, the chief, prior to taking any official action contemplated within 46-1 of this chapter as to Blue Run Park, the Chief of Police or his authorized representative should, if reasonably possible, means if it's, if it's reasonable and it's possible, make his best effort to coordinate such official action. Official action means closure of the park or a portion of. Make a coordinated effort before such official action with both Marion County Sheriff Office and Marion County Parks and Recreation, in consideration of the safety of those individuals who may access the river at Marion County's KP Hole. Certainly, having, um, a great number of people on the river that are already on their way on a voyage, whose the exit point is Blue Run Park, not, not knowing that the park is closed and they do not have a exit point, would be disastrous for all. So this is addressing that no action like that would be taken unless there was a, an attempt, a serious attempt to contact the county and the sheriff. One part of this language that I have a little issue with, it kind of, I think that states it on itself, but then there's additional language that I think pushes it. It's just, it's a little strong, but let's talk about that. All right, let's go back to 129. Prior to taking any official action contemplated within section 46-1, chapter of Blue Run Park, the Chief of Police or authorized representative should, if reasonably possible, make his best effort to coordinate such official action with both Marion County Sheriff and Marion County Parks and Recreation, in consideration of the safety of the individuals who may access the river at Marion County's KP Hole facility as way, as well. And then it says, as well, to avoid infringement of any and all rights guaranteed Marion County via the interlocal agreement. Whenever I'm in a legal contract with anybody, when I'm guaranteeing any and all rights, guarantee, that, there's hardly any stronger language than that. I think we've already stated everything that needs to be stated. I don't, I do not feel comfortable with the additional language that we will try to avoid infringement on any and all rights guaranteed to Marion County via interlocal And that the perpetual conservation easement recorded in Marion County, blah, 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 ran into Marion County. So I'm good, I'm, I'm absolutely good, understand, I'm locked and loaded on our agreement. I understand it. My issue is just the addition of the, to avoid infringement on any and all rights guaranteed. I, I, that is something that hasn't been there previously. It showed up and I don't know why it's there. I think the language is already strong enough on its own.
May I ask, would you be, and would the county be good with access to Marion County facility via interlocal agreement? I mean, just get rid of, they're good and you're good, as well as to avoid infringement? Get rid of those words and, but keep Marion County via interlocal agreement, 2007-14?
You want to speak to the philosophy, you know, oh. You want to speak or want, Angela to speak?
No, I think the attorneys probably need to speak to that, but as far as I'm concerned, I can see that any and all could be very, very broad. And what we rely on with Marion County is actually the fact that we are part of Marion County and we certainly appreciate and enjoy that relationship. So I think that your concern is justified. I agree with your point that maybe any and all does not need to be there. We have kind of a personal relationship as well as a governmental relationship and we want to continue having that kind of relationship. We are with you.
Let's council make comment and then we'll turn it to you. Okay, Ms. Williams?
I don't have any comments right now.
Okay, Ms. Covich?
Yeah, um, the only problem I have with the same word, that wording that Bill brought up is this, when emergencies happen, they happen in fraction of seconds. Okay? See this at the height, the campuses, our school campuses, when something happens, nobody has time to start thinking about the allegity, the allegity, legalities of the decision that they are going to have to make to save people's lives. Okay, they're going to give orders instantaneously to save lives. And if it's a patrol, one of our city patrolmen out there, I don't want them to have to start thinking about, now what is the protocol here? They need to act immediately. In case a deranged person out there with a knife or a gun or whatever.
This language should allow them to do that.
Right. Just wanted to make sure that.
Vice, Vice Mayor?
I mean, I know that police already have protocols in place for emergencies anyway that they'll follow, so, but I, I don't have as much, I don't have any heart room, really, even with the words being left in there, but I'll leave it to the attorney to explain why the words were put in.
Okay, my, my opinion on it is, I think it's overkill. And in a legal document, when you're giving away all rights and guaranteeing everything... you're giving away all rights and guaranteeing everything. I, I would not, in the real world, sign a contract that would bind me to something like that. I just, I just wouldn't do it. Okay, Mr. Hand?
So I, I think any and all just emphasizes the importance of contracts, but it can be removed, it doesn't change legally what's there. Perhaps something to consider for counsel, and, and this was language that was, was vetted with the county attorneys and, you know, they didn't have legal objections to it. One way, ultimately, the city is governed by those agreements. We all know that. And we all know that there is a possibility of some sort of horrific disaster occurring that necessitates action that could very well be in derogation of those particular agreements. One perhaps solution which really doesn't change, you know, what council's goals are here, would simply is to state as well as to avoid undue infringement of rights guaranteed to Marion County via the interlocal agreements.
What was the word?
Undue.
Oh, sorry.
And the dictionary definition, it's coming up under Oxford, so I, you know, typically we, we stick with Webster's and, and in the legal world, but unwarranted or inappropriate because excessive or disproportionate. So undue, undue infringement of any and all rights, or pardon, striking of any and all. It could read KP hole facility as well as to avoid undue infringement of rights guaranteed to Marion County per the agreement and per per the perpetual conservation easement if council wishes to keep the language in regarding the agreements.
Well, is there any downside to the language that's scattered throughout these documents to just end it on line 133? After it says may access the river at Marion County's KP hole facility as well, period?
Well, I think we just end after facility, period. If that were the case, you know, at the meeting, previous meeting, discussed referencing the agreements, but I, I think in that case, you would have a situation where the police chief is still, if he were making a decision to impact the parks, would still be, if, again, reasonably possible, assuming we're not having something so horrific that contact cannot be made, is going to reach out to these particular entities and look at safety on the river. And the city is very aware that it is covered or is governed by these agreements. So, you know, I can't speak to how the county would feel about it, but legally, there's no issue, I think, with ending the sentence there as you suggest.
Well, I, I, I just truly believe that not only 46-76 is representative of the agreement, throughout these documents, it's stated over and over that we have an agreement with the county and this is what the county is allowed to do and we're obliged to go So my, my position is to, to end it on line 133, may access the river at Marion County's KP hole facility, period.
And, and to, to that, Mayor, it's very well documented in the whereas clauses, you know, the perpetual conservation easement and the interlocal agreement are referenced specifically within the whereas clauses.
Okay.
That's, that's up to your...
All right, Ms. Kenny, what do you?
I would be in agreement with that.
Ms. Williams?
No problem. In agreement. So the county's happy.
I think they call that word ambivalent in other words. Either way. All right. All right, marching orders are to end it on line 133.
And specifically at facility, is that correct? Make best efforts to coordinate such official action with both Marion County entities in consideration of the safety of those individuals who may access the river at Marion County's KP hole facility, period.
Correct. And there's a safety factor in that where the, the chief or his representative is obliged to reach out to, to end entities. So it's, you know, it's, there's a three-way thing going on here. It's not like anybody can just snap their fingers and do whatever they want to do. All right. Going through my notes, counsel, I do not see any notations that I have made on page five. Looks like we have gone over those and we have got those where we like them. We go to page six. Looks like we have struck lines 214, 215, 216, 217, and 218. Is that correct, counsel?
Yes, sir.
Yes, it is. And, and Mayor, I, I would just like to report on lines 194 to 200. If we're going in order, if you, if you want to come back to it, it's fine. Just, there has been some changes here. This is section 46-78. This is dealing with swimming and my office didn't make contact with DEP. They didn't express any, any, any issues with, with the swimming. Ultimately, per council's wishes and direction at the past meeting, swimming is not referenced, so it is intentionally allowed, in other words. It simply, there's a right-of-way requirement, which council directed me to make, and the fishing, the disallowment of fishing from the river ramp. And that, those are the changes to 46-78. So swimming is not encouraged, but it is not prohibited.
Right. Ms. Kenny, you, you have any issues with those changes?
Oh, I think the changes thus far are excellent. I do have one additional change that I would consider, and that would be on line 224.
Okay.
On line 224, the only thing that, that I would like...
Well, let me get a consensus first. Let me get a consensus first.
Sure.
So we're good with, you're good with, with?
Yes.
Counsel. Ms. Williams? Okay. All right, back to you. It's all yours.
I would like to see eliminated the word currently. Currently to me is something that is ongoing and I think it would be more specific if it said the KP hole shuttle service provided by Marion County for its contractors on behalf of Marion County would be sufficient.
Any comment on that, Ms. Williams?
I agree with that.
She's making comment on line 224, elimination of the word currently. Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry. Absolutely, the word currently should not be there because, again, it does bring, doesn't bring finality to the fact that this ordinance is going to stand as it reads. Currently just doesn't need to be there or should be there.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
I'd just like to ask our attorney why, what?
Mr. Hand?
Currently is placed there in, in discussions with the county, one of the things the county was, was concerned about here and looking forward is what services may provided, be provided, is they wanted, requested within the ordinance, some sort of recognition that the management plan is in fact a document that could change in the future. So the city and FCT and the county and all the partners wish to make changes. So currently is reflected over this. This is a, you know, this, this statement, whether currently is there or not, is not a regulatory statement. It's a statement that is describing the state of affairs, which you don't typically see in legislation, but it's, for the reasons that we've discussed in, in previous council meetings, it's letting everybody know what the state of affairs is. It's a, it's an issue where council is requesting clarity. So it's, it's an exception to, you know, how I typically draft ordinances, but I don't have a problem putting it there. So currently, there's no problem in taking that out. And I will add that, you know, it does state in the very first whereas clause, there is a recognition, and this is something else that I discussed with the county and I included and stated that I would and had included before we discussed it, but there's a recognition that the management plan can and does change. In fact, we're anticipating a change regarding the fishing, fishing being allowed in the very first whereas clause states the Blue Run Park management plan as may be amended from time to time. Of course, the management plan changing requires action to be taken directly by the city. So council and the city remains in control over that, just have to work with their partners. So currently, that's the reason for it being in there. I do not have any issue removing it.
So council seems to have a consensus that they would like it to be removed and on your advice that you're ambivalent to whether it's there or not, let's, let's remove it.
Ready hood?
All right. I'm going through it. I think we, at least council is good with the firearms, but at page seven, I have absolutely no notations on the ticketing. I, I have to be truthful, I have not focused a lot of time on this section of the ordinance. So council, we have actually gone from the beginning to the end. We haven't talked too much, we can talk about the penalty faces, whatever. I, I, I'm not prepared to say too much about it. Ms. Kenny?
Well, I am not prepared to say too much about it anymore either. I'm pretty happy with what we have got.
Ms. Williams?
You know, I'm not. I'm not prepared.
You're not what?
I'm with y'all, I'm not prepared to say anything else.
Ms. Covich?
I think everything looks in order.
Vice Mayor?
Penalties we've gone over and it was easy to do.
So council, just to repeat what we're going to do, Ms. Odom, we're going to put this on the agenda for the meeting, correct?
Okay, it goes to planning next.
Oh, it goes right from here, right to planning? We don't have to send it from a meeting? Okay.
What we could do, Mandy, I could bring this back to council with the changes, just so they have one more look at it. If, tonight, council by consensus can say we're fine with these and have it go to planning. If you want to bring it back at the council meeting, that's up to you, but then it's another discussion item. If you want to send it out, I know the changes I need to make, I'm going to make a few changes, adding semicolons, that sort of thing, which does not change the content of the ordinance. And then I'm going to make all the changes that you've stated today. You want to send it on, that's fine.
So if I'm, if I'm correct, if we sent it directly from this meeting, this workshop to planning, we still have an opportunity when it comes back to us to make any changes?
You will have several and as many as you want. You will have first reading and second reading and you can draw those out to more than two meetings if you wish, if you wish to have further discussion, if planning comes up with something, or really all the planning is doing is looking at it from a comprehensive plan consistency standpoint, but they may come up with some policy recommendations, sometimes they do. But certainly it's still within your hands if you wanted to make changes to it while it was in planning. So you regain, you have full control over it. If there's something you didn't think of and wanted to put it on further agenda...
So let's have a consensus. Ms. Kenny, you want to go straight to planning?
I would, yes.
Ms. Williams?
I got a question. I'm reading something from a citizen, a suggestion, 148 and 149.
148, 149.
Did we discuss that? We can talk about that, didn't we?
We can go back there.
You're welcome to bring it, bring it up for discussion, 148, 149.
I like the suggestion that the citizen, motorized trail use is limited to motorized wheelchairs, golf carts are prohibited.
My only thing with that is that if somebody is, I mean, because I think we decided that if we needed it for like maintenance and those types of things, that's why we were...
Oh, yeah, I can understand that. I can understand.
And that's why we were leaving it in there.
Like it is?
Yes, ma'am. That's, that's, that's how we were, had talked about it, that we weren't having it where people could just, you know, now if somebody, I mean, I've seen people that have needed to use a golf cart because of their, that, that's their, how they use their mode of transportation, it's not a wheelchair because they have their aunts with them or whatever.
Yeah, the trail is not wide enough and I really have not seen any golf carts on the trail, you know, but it's going to be crowded out there. I'm almost about to be running a little bicycles.
Yeah. And again, it's something that if it becomes an issue, we can always take it back out. But I think we were leaving it in there specifically for maintenance and those types of things.
But it doesn't, it doesn't say, at least what I'm seeing, I, I think clearly, Ms. Williams, thank you for your insight, we know that trail right now has walkers, hikers, people with dogs.
Yes.
Which are, if you ever walk a dog, golf cart and a dog's really interesting. We're also going to have an increase in the number of bicycles. Now, if you add on to that golf carts, you know, we all know certain communities that that's the mode of transportation. The only reason it's not used there very much, you can't get there. But if there was ever a way to discover to get golf carts there, that, that would make that walking trail really problematic with everything that's going on.
Yeah.
I provided to council a few meetings ago, a pamphlet from the US Department of Justice on ADA requirements, and I think practically you won't have a problem with golf carts. Golf carts are only permitted in certain parts of the city per the city's golf cart ordinance. And that being said, and I'll get into it in a second, ADA requires people who are, requires that people who have disabilities be allowed to choose the means to use their electric vehicles. And, and that would include golf carts, but that being stated, there is no way to get a golf cart there practically unless you're taking some sort of a trailer or some sort of a vehicle that can handle it and they can't drive that there legally. And, you know, from a practice standpoint, that's not likely. They do have that right to choose that if their disability necessitates it. But you see, the ordinance also covers that stating those necessary for accessibility. Very rarely is a golf cart necessary for anyone to get around and, you know, still they do have that choice and the Department of Justice makes that very, very clear as the pamphlet does. And I can, I can read the sections if you want to go over it, but practically speaking, I doubt that would become an issue. More along the lines of what you see, you know, here's some of the points, covered entities must allow people with disabilities who use manual or power wheelchairs or scooters and manually powered mobility aids such as walkers, crutches, kinks into all areas where members of the public can go. And there is the choice of device section saying they do have that right, but I think from a practical standpoint, I don't see that becoming an issue and if it did, then yes, it could be addressed in whatever manner, you know, best be addressed, should that become a prolific use of the park.
One thing I can share with council is there is another trailhead over there toward the ball field that's, comes off of that dirt road that Brooks or whatever that dirt road is. So there is actually a paved trail right there that you could actually come in from that area and that trail then comes in paved and it winds up hooking into our main trail. So there is, there is a way other than the main parking lot to get to the main trail. And there's also the possibility of Rainbow River Club, which is those cabins that are abutted to it and have open gates that maybe in the future, you know, they could have golf carts. So, you know, it's, what we're, what we're trying to do is make sure those are using golf carts for recreation, don't have a badge that says, I got a bum knee and I need a golf cart, you know?
For non-recreational use?
Well, what's allowed is, you know, and again, there might be some other pathways to get to the park and the chief knows the specifics more than I do of where the, where the golf carts are allowed in the city. I don't believe that any of those pathways permit golf carts currently, so nobody would be able to drive those to there. And, and what, you know, what the Department of Justice does say, you have to allow the choice unless there is a legitimately safety reason that it cannot be accommodated. So what the city would have to articulate here, and it's a very high standard, so, you know, my advice would be to avoid it if possible. If they do become a problem, then you will be much, it'll be much, it'll be much easier for, to articulate that safety problem because you're seeing it. Right now, it's perspective.
Right.
And you don't have a problem yet.
Exactly.
It is a good idea, you know, I, I do believe in, in preemptive regulation and thinking ahead, but ADA is a very, it's a very strong and very important federal statute to comply with. And if you're going to specifically state that, you need to articulate that reason, you need to be able to back it up thoroughly. And we would have to articulate the whereas clauses and construct those safety reasons. So without a real problem now, probably just best to keep an eye on it and be aware of it and if it happens...
Your point is well taken, if it does become an issue, council can do an amendment to the ordinance. But I think it's a very, I think it could be, you know, the only reason it's not happening, it'd be fun, I can imagine being out there on a golf cart going back and forth through the woods, that'd be great. Like you say, you just can't get there. So, Ms. Williams, you brought up a great point, I think the consensus is... I think the consensus is point made, but at this time, just leave it alone. Are you okay with that? Okay. Anything else, counsel? All right. So, Ms. Odom, counsel by consensus has directed staff, once Mr. Hand has made his adjustments, modifications, to send it to planning commission. And we're, you're getting your, you're getting your baptism right now. All right, let's see, let's see how this goes. Okay, we're done with number one. Congratulations, job well done. Go to number two, counsel comments. Anybody have any particular comment?
I see a tunnel, I see the light at the end of the tunnel. I see the rainbow at the end of the tunnel.
You also, if you don't want to make comments now, you can make them later. But I would advise if you have any comment, say it now because we have 23 items on the next workshop.
The only comment that I would make, and this is going back to the, to the park. This is going back to the park, coming toward that bridge. My idea was to put something there that says, you're now entering Citrus County. That was something that I was thinking about. I mentioned it to the guy on the park yesterday that works for the state. He does the leaves and stuff like that. I just think that would be a good idea because you got a lot of people that are coming in that park, using that.
Oh, you mean, oh, I'm sorry, from the park trail.
Trail, right, right.
Sorry, I'm, sorry.
You know, you see those signs, now entering.
Yeah, no, that's a great idea.
Marion County, Citrus County. Because some people might not know where they are and it would be good to have something like that just in case there's an emergency and they can say, well, you know, I'm on this side of the sign, I'm on this side, I'm in Citrus County. On this side of the Marion County sign.
I love the idea. I know when I'm traveling and it says, entering this county, entering Levy County.
Yeah, yeah, it's kind of a fun day.
It kinda makes the trip kind of fun.
Because once you get on the bridge, you're in Citrus County, right?
That's right.
Well, once you cross the bridge.
Once you cross the bridge, you're in Citrus County.
That would be, that would be kind of an interesting.
I think that would be a good idea.
I would bet you.
Maybe not know where they are.
I would bet you most, most people that go over that bridge, most people do not realize that one side of the bridge is Citrus and one side is Marion. And I think that would be, I think that would be kind of an educational thing, that that river is the boundary between the two counties. I like the idea. I don't know who would be responsible for that.
Looks all right.
Troy, make a few phone calls for us, okay?
We'll make that happen.
All right. The only comment I have and the only reason I'm making it now is I don't plan to make any later because we are really gonna have a lot to do. Is I, as we all know, the Riverland News has officially closed down its office in Dunellen. That's, at the same time, I got a phone call from a resident in one of the mobile home parts that this Citrus Chronicle has stopped home delivery to Dunellen. So it's the same corporation ownership that bought the Riverland News. So I called them up in Michigan, one of the main owners, and asked them why. And it just came down to a new business, crunchy numbers. And they have looked at the expense of having an office of the Riverland News in Dunellen. They felt it was not cost effective, that they could do the same thing from their office in Crystal River. And they also felt that there wasn't enough subscriptions of the Chronicle in Dunellen for there to be home delivery, where they actually deliver the paper, paper to your house old fashioned style. Again, just came down to dollars and cents. I did express to him that I thought that the River, Riverland News in particular was a blow to the city. I think having that little office right on Pennsylvania, where you could pull in there, talk to the editor anytime you wanted, go in there if you wanted to get an ad. I know a lot of times, as a councilman mayor, I wanted to go over positions or something I may have said. It, it was great. And I really think Dunellen's unique and it's very personal. People know each other. And I think moving that office out of here, I, I wouldn't be surprised, I don't want to say that, but it can't help their business not, not being directly where people can go in and see Sean and Michelle. So he didn't budge on it. He just said, well, mayor, thank you for calling. I appreciate your input, but we have, our boards gone over it and that's just what we've decided to do.
You know, Dunellen used to be very personal. Well, I hardly ever know, I hardly know anybody now. There's a lot of people.
They're growing.
See the ends surrounding it.
They're growing.
It used to be that you knew everybody.
So that, that's the only thing I want to say. And that's, that's, that's a big, that's a big hit, losing that.
I have a comment also before we close.
Yeah.
Since we, this meeting has been about Blue Run Park, I think it's important for everybody here to know and understand that it's just not that parking lot and that ramp that we call the park that the city of Dunellen has a right to regulate. Rainbow Springs and that river, which is called the Rainbow River, was in 1986 declared by the state of Florida to be an aquatic preserve and is managed as an aquatic preserve. And in the late 1990s, the Florida Aquatic Preserves, that's part of Florida DEP, they wrote up a series of laws, regulations, ordinances. And one of them that I think that stands out for us here because we are sincerely the designated protectors of that Rainbow River besides Florida DEP in Swiftmont. It states in the aquatic preserve description of ordinances, and I quote directly, municipalities have the right to protect aquatic preserves. So it's more than just the park, the pavement and the launch that was built by the county. We have the right to actually protect the river. And having said that, I see some problems right now that I'd like to address at our next, at our meeting on Monday.
All right, let's get our comments over because we still have comments for the general public. I'm sure there's some people that would like to. So we still have to get through department head comments. Need department head comments at this time? Okay, city attorney comments?
Yes, sir. I don't have any, don't have a legal report at this time. And given that we have a long meeting ahead of us, I did want to share with you that my wife and I are having a baby. Thank you.
Yes.
I told you, Andrew, that beard, that beard would help you out.
When is the baby due?
It's about five months. And that's, I just wanted to let you know, since that shouldn't change anything. I may have to send Patrick for something to cover a meeting in the future. But we're about five, five and a half months out, kind of depending on how it goes. I did want to let you know.
I feel like you're my little brother. So excited.
Thank you, thank you. Yes.
You've got me.
Thank you.
You're gonna have to work extra hard.
Very good, very good. All right, we go to, I'm sure for several individuals. This is a very important part of the meetings for counsel, please. Let's do attention, we go to number five, public comments. And Michelle, do we have anybody that has signed up?
We have Bill Biber.
Mr. Biber, we have 30 minutes before our next one, so please keep that in mind.
I have 30 minutes?
He only gets 30 minutes.
Bill Biber?
That was good.
9552 Southwest 192nd Court Road. I think we're making good progress on the rules. I was particularly happy to see that little change that makes it very clear that there's one delivery that can operate out of Blue Run Park. And that was established back in 2007 with the interlocal agreement. We should keep with that, particularly when you see what I'm gonna show you later today. I think you'll be more convinced that that's the right policy.
A couple of other things. I'm not really disagreeing with anybody, but I just want to bring this up. The issue of motorized vehicles on the trail, the way the language is now, and I spent a career dealing, as Jim has, though he just left, dealing with ADA issues. I probably built more ADA trails than any person alive. I built actually an ADA trail that went from Barnegat Bay with a platform and a ramp across the Barrier Island with a pay telephone, across the beach, primary dune, secondary dune, down the beach with another ramp with handicapped wheelchairs at the bottom. So a person could actually go all the way from the bay to the ocean and actually go to the ocean and catch a fish, which some people, many people actually did. So I have a lot of experience dealing directly with ADA, dealing with the Justice Department, dealing with the ADA managers, and have a lot of experience dealing with trails because it's recognized by ADA that you cannot build a trail everywhere across America. It's gonna be ADA accessible. And I think the point that I made in my letter to you is Dunellen and OTT in Marion County have done a fantastic job of providing ADA accessible trails that need them probably more than anybody. Just, just look where you can go. And when this is all done, you're gonna be able to go to Booksville in a wheelchair. So it's a long, I know it'll take you all day. I'll pick you up at the other end. So what's gonna happen? And I've been down this road myself many times. You're gonna have a community come at you and say, your rules allow golf carts. And they're gonna want to force you to provide golf carts. And in the rules, there is a waiver for that, which I've been through myself many times. You do not have to provide ADA accessibility up the side of a mountain or somewhere else. There are exceptions for that, and the ADA people who manage that realize that. But I'll just read you what it says. And I think Andrew has done a pretty good job of bringing us up to date on it. Here's just the first page. Covered entities must also allow people with disabilities who use other types of power driven mobility devices into their facilities unless a particular type of device cannot be accommodated because of legitimate safety requirements. Where legitimate safety requirements bar a combination for a particular type of device, the covered entity must provide the service that offers in all the ways possible. I actually provided ADA accessible for a lighthouse. We provided a video at the bottom of the lighthouse. So you can do that, it's not a big deal. You don't want golf carts on the trail. I think you need to have personal experience with that. Look what you've got. It's a 10-foot wide trail. You've got bicycles, baby carriages, pets. You don't, right? And it's extremely busy. So if you put a, a golf cart on that trail, you're gonna cause an accident. So you don't want to do that. So go through the effort, apply for the waiver and make the rule as I've suggested here. Motorized trail use is limited to motorized wheelchairs. That's fine, pedals are great. But, and scooters, but not golf carts. Because they're gonna show up. I would tell you, I've been down this road myself, they will show up. That's my one thing. Firearm issue, I'm not gonna go through that whole thing again, but Andrew and I have debated the issue of presumptive knowledge, meaning that you're supposed to know the knowledge of the state when you arrive at a park. What if you're from South Carolina? What if you're from New Jersey? My goodness, those people, they don't know anything. So I, I don't like having a rule that we cannot post and tell the public what it is. If 1921-5 says firearms are prohibited, certainly Andrew, put the state of Florida perant that. That's okay. But tell the people what the rule is, that they cannot have a firearm. You don't want somebody showing up there. I mean, look what happened today. You can't have a firearm in this park. You don't have to say anything. You're not with it. The other issue, I'm just gonna pass along a little anecdote about swimming. And forgive me, mayor, because I have beat you over the head with this 100 times.
One minute.
I can do this in one minute. I thought I had half an hour.
One minute, I'm looking.
You gave me 20, you gave me 30 minutes. I sat down at the park about two weeks ago and just kind of watched the operation and see what was happening with deliveries, which we all know what's happening with deliveries. They were basically tying up the entire park. And while I was there, three carloads of people coming specifically to swim showed up. And they got their rafts out, they got their tubes out. One guy had a whole armload of doodles and they headed for the ramp to go swimming. And they were in the parking lot, of course. And what happened was, he had a police officer there at that time. The police officer went up to the people, each one, three different groups of people that were there when I was there in an hour. And he told them they couldn't swim there and they had to leave and he evicted them. And they were gone. So what's gonna happen to you, I can tell you, since you have the lowest cost swimming area of the three, yours is free. People are gonna start showing up. So your canoe kayak hiking parking lot is gonna be taken up with swims. And that's what's gonna happen. You don't want that. That's a, that's a unexpected consequence. When you make a policy decision, people will figure that out. And they will bring their golf carts and they will show up to go swimming. And this is what happens in the park world, which is something that I live with, you know.
All right, Ms. Mr.?
It says I have 57 seconds.
Does he? No, he's been talking for almost 5 minutes.
That was the second 30 minutes, yeah.
That's, that's the end, my goodness.
So what you're saying, people are gonna show up in the park with a golf cart and their swim suits, packing a six cup, right?
That's right. Well, what's in the management plan, as you know, mayor, it says, it says that the rules must be posted throughout the park. So you don't want to post a rule that refers to another rule somewhere else. That doesn't make any sense. Not in a park context. Maybe in a legal context it does, but not in a park context. Tell the people what the rule is.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, is there anyone else signed up? Ms. Odom?
Yes, sir.
Yes. One, one moment. Okay, go ahead.
Just one thing I'd like to add. This, this is discussing the actual ordinance here. Now, what was provided before was this ordinance and the rules in this ordinance, and also a separate set of rules. It's not separate, but it mirrors these rules within the code. And that is what could go on the signs at the park. So the signs on the park do cite, or will cite, the actual firearm statute. But it's not within the code, given the fact that typically those citations can change. Of course, the city would need to then change the signs. But the actual citation can go on the signs at the park so that way visitors can, can look up them, have access to them.
Chris, did you want to speak? Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Okay. Name and address, sir.
Chris Anderson, 11463 North William Street. I'm not gonna, you know, there's really not much more I can say. I think that's gonna change anybody's opinion up here. I mean, I would like to talk further. I think we've tried to present an agreement to work as good partners, but obviously, the consensus and the feedback that I'm hearing, you know, you know, nobody even wants to entertain any further discussion on that. That's unfortunate. But I just did have a couple of questions. So a, a use there, it's either an allowable use or it's disallowable. It's gotta be one or the other, correct? Does that seem right? It's either allowed or it's not allowed.
I'll refer a legal question to the attorney.
And where I'm going with that, I mean, has, most importantly, has the city of Dunellen reached out to FCT for determination on private commercial shuttle use as a disallowable activity? Has that been done? Anytime in the last five years? Is anybody on counsel aware of that? I mean, Andrew might, no, I don't know, but I can't talk to him. Can't talk to him directly, so I'm just direct it to the chair.
What was the question again?
So has the city of Dunellen reached out to FCT for their determination on private commercial shuttle use as a disallowable activity at Blue Run Park?
I am not, I am not aware myself.
Okay. Can you ask Andrew, Attorney?
Mr. Hand, you can speak to this only if you care to.
I can say that, you know, I think, first of all, disallowable and allowable uses deal with tax consequences. I do know that Ms. Bound reached out to FCT at some time in the past regarding disallowable uses and so forth. And whether things fell under that as far as tax laws go, yes.
Well, I think they were, what she was referring to was as far as if that was a commercial use as a disallowable activity. And the whole thing of, the whole commercial use is trying not to, you know, run afoul of the, of the rules and... you know, run afoul of the rules and procedures that have been put in place with the grant contract and such. So, I mean, if they're the ones that make the rules, I mean, and whatever else has been approved in the management plan, I think it boils down to revenue being collected on the site. If no revenue being collected on the site, then it's not considered disallowable activity. So then if that's the case, then how's it considered a commercial use if there's no revenue being collected?
It's a legal question, I'll refer that to the attorney.
The answer to that question would be, again, disallowable and allowable uses deal with tax consequences. Ultimately, the management plan lashes out and states that no commercial use is allowed. Therefore, it's within the purview of the city who then makes regulations under the management plan similar, would be similar, I guess, by analogy to a comprehensive plan. City can define that, and essentially, that's what you see in this ordinance.
So just another question, if I had an Airbnb and I was, you know, had kayaked at my Airbnb and was to deliver them at the, you know, Blue Run Park or allow those people, is that considered a commercial use? I mean, there's just, there's a lot of other questions that come along with that, and that's, you know. So, and I know, you know, somebody mentioned Airbnbs in some of the past meetings as well, so. There's a lot of other questions here. I mean, I understand what you guys are going after, and, you know, quite honestly, if it was up to you guys putting out of business, that would be fine, you know, but I mean, I think regulation is the answer here, you know, from the ride shares, taxi cabs, whatever. I mean, or a brick and mortar facility, I've said that time and time again. You know, the best way to go about it is regulation. We've been trying to be good partners here, and, you know, we're the only ones that are actually showing up to these meetings. I don't think there's been any other outfit, you know, that's tried to work with the city or anything. So, you know, if you guys want to, you know, take that into consideration.
Thank you, Chris. All right.
Thank you, sir.
There will still be several more, as I have explained, meetings and hearings on this, so you're welcome to continue to participate.
Hello, thank you.
Are there any additional comments? Okay, Dr. Eno, would you like to speak? Name and address, please.
Bert Eno, live at 9220 Southwest 193rd Circle in Dunellen, Rainbow Springs. I just want to respond to what Mr. Anderson said. Impplied that the FCT is the manager of all the rules, regulations, practices in the park. They are not. The city of Dunellen is. They have just agreed to a management plan that applies to the park and is supposed to be enforced by the city. So he's way off base on that matter.
Thank you for the clarification. Is there anybody else in the audience that would like to speak to the special workshop? Okay.
Is there room for one more comment?
Is it going to be 30 seconds or less?
I can do it in 30 seconds or less. I would like to make a motion to put on the agenda for our Monday city council meeting. I would like to suggest on the agenda, yes, that we
Say it.
We make a final decision on Anderson's proposal to do business with the city of Dunellen.
That's not fair to him, he just walked out the door and
It'll be on the agenda, so it will be there, because it will be put on the agenda. That we make a decision to finalize
We're not even finished with our rules.
Ms. Covich, they have offered their proposal to the city.
Yes, they have. And I think the city needs to reply.
Has decided to, at this point, up to this point, to not respond. And no response to an offer means it currently is not in play.
Okay, well, I was thinking in favor of Chris Anderson, we might save him some legal fees if he continues to employ his attorney to keep addressing the city with letters and bringing up things like he did today that aren't truths. I think we should have a formal letter to end the conversation.
Mr. Hand, I can't speak for the council yet because I'm not sure, but if one member is asking to put something on the agenda and the remaining members of council do not agree with that, what is, what happens?
Do we have a copy of the resolution, Mandy? I don't believe that's contemplated. I mean, ultimately, you know, I think what you're talking about, you can bring up a discussion item, but to actually bring something for decision, which can't really do at this point anyhow because that would require FW, well, it would require FCT participation. It depends on exactly what you all want to do. So if it's just a discussion item or if it's a vote on an actual contract, you know, currently, there's not an ordinance in place. What this ordinance states is, you know, the only way you can have a commercial activity is if there's a contract. So now I will tell you that I haven't received any letters or any communication from Attorney Batzel since the last time I spoke with him. Or I don't recall if I spoke with him or not at the last meeting, but that was the last time I saw him or I've heard from him. So I have not heard from him, and of course, he's not present today. So ultimately, council, council people do have the option to put things on the agenda as far as a decision item on a contract that has not been reviewed and was not part of the workshop. You know, that probably would be best as a further workshop item if it were to go forward. But if council doesn't wish to address it, if it were on an agenda, they could remove it.
Ms. Covich, right now, we have directed our finished work to go to the planning commission. Our finished work includes that there is to be no commercial activity.
Okay, so we don't, the city does not need to further communicate.
That is the point.
Very good.
Are you good with that?
Good with that.
Okay, very good, thank you. All right. Okay, we have one more. Council is dying, they have about a 10-minute break before we go. Please go.
Suzanne Eno, 9220 Southwest 193rd Circle, Dunellen, Florida. If Mr. Anderson leaves and he misses something, that's his problem. The council does not owe him his presence.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Okay, council is going to adjourn for the special meeting. We're going to take a 13-minute break, and we'll be ready for our regular workshop. Everybody stretch your legs, and we've got a lot of good stuff coming up. Thank you very much.